Still warm outside. Okay, tonight, uh, we perform our agenda and we start off with, uh, open the prayer, we stand and pray by the prayer, and we follow that movement.
To God this afternoon, we come to say thank you so much for another opportunity to be together and do the bid, bid of the city. Uh, we thank you for fair and all the other activities at our school and we pray for blessings for our young people that travel near and far on their extracurricular activities and we thank you that everyone was safe during the prayer activities. Father, we pray right now that you continue to bless each one of us, that we might come up with good ideas to make our community better. In Jesus' name, we thank God. Amen.
Our prayer today is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation of America, in need of this, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have talked here in minutes from the office meeting. I don't know if we need.
Did you have a brief?
Okay, it's time to open this one call. Because I don't believe. But he said to me about a day or two after the meeting, so I think you can switch again. Yeah, same thing here. So. Okay. It's all here, John.
Did you get the wrap on?
Just warm.
I brought some coffee over here. Okay, President City Councilman in very good session, Monday, August fifteenth, two thousand two, two thirty PM, in the municipal building. Mayor Carroll presented, following words of the president, Department Supervisor President, Department Secretary Nelson, Department of Donald. Oliver called me orders, pretty empty, prayer, please be present. July, the July Minister approved A O, uh, pretty moved to approve, sitting in second. Financials, pretty moved to approve, Matt Roberts, second, and the board, they know. Under reports, uh, Ann Jordan, President Police Chiefs, as he had once reached Mark, Paul McKennan, and the officer, who is a staff of work, and Russian. Oliver. And Parkin, and we're not all teams ready. Said it's a lot of work for her to, uh, live here and she didn't have the opportunity to fill it. Mayor Governor presented the issues for the sidewalk projects, we did work on the second. This is the third time the, uh, business led this project. Uh, one bid was received, two hundred thirty thousand, seven hundred sixty nine dollars. Oliver shared the big jobs are, once.
You know what?
Yeah, that's basically what you think. Said in, uh, January eighteenth, the engineer flew in and cost to devote the size of construction area at, at, uh, two hundred thirty thousand dollars, four years later. It was, uh, a little two hundred thirty thousand, seven hundred sixty nine dollars. The list did, there was, and we don't want to send. Governor said we go start late, before we did start this year. Austin asked if the state had money for this, Oliver said we need, uh, city need twenty percent. Governor said we had that, uh, it was put back, and the lady from the lady COVID, and the lady that was at the Evans, uh, a couple of years ago. See if I can bring him straight, just with five hundred ABC from St. area. It was dangerous, it's three hundred thousand dollars per year, man. He said in total last week, it's true, they've been before the state, media does, again. The sanitary part in the area of East Street, there's a lot of erosion. She continues saying the station of apartment, we created the city park, tried to last things. The other, and we should know about that, and they sent them. Listen, cleanup, uh, problems with the sun, the tiny excavator, form was found in street course. And be here next week. Eight to ten ounces will be, uh, raised in, kind of going out soon for the year. And, uh, the office issue for the list, houses will be torn down, and they're waiting, and she's working with others for next year. Does work in the more, and instead, there's some issue, a lot of the same people aren't calling. This is consuming a lot of time, uh, because a lot of people, uh, are in rental property and want to, uh, the owners of the letter. On the sidewalk project, we started fifty seven, uh, and by the D A J S, we already finished on it. Also exempt without an audit, we were, uh, got plenty. Said she also was moving for him. And she said it, uh, responses from people, she gets, uh, Ann Jordan call. Perry asked community to do accordance on the land awards, uh, property owners, because they're not taking care of property. Governor says she is working with Ann Jordan, on the clarification, uh, who she's taking. And once she's had a problem with her, now all locals, who was at the state, take care of problems, and they'll let. And perfectly being an objective person, one maybe it's not. Carl Fender. The new harsh director. But I think we're raising questions, we're working with community, I think this is passionate and important, working with the youngsters. Perry Oliver said he was picked by the harsh commission, they learned a good job, they worked with clients, and good work ethic. The families.
Ah, we got smart.
You made a little bit easier for me. Okay, Carl Fender, this is, we're doing great, we're doing harsh, we're raising, we're replacing, uh, uh, state, helping help. Fando said he looks forward to working in the future, Oliver said Fando has selected another mission. He's already on the job, Fando has some good plans to do, work ethic, and Fando can also be a night court still. And President Athlete Maras, has three, have been to the state championship football team, the Curly Bowl. We're having council, the need to approve during March, we replace the harsh, the harsh commission, that she has left hand. Mars Oliver said, his first football. Was in five years, in recent two camp, park experience, he worked with the parks, Indiana, Florida. They said Mars is also a coach, and he's a good guy, and he's become a professional athlete. He was approved with a favorable vote, watching, Austin moved to approve with Robert Seig. Under citizens' concerns, Jake, we're having a rest, the issue, we let the bill actually, the city has planned for this, continuing as it is. He was asked to do different breaks, so he would do, he said there are two, uh, break, for those on the, one for those who come far, all the way. Oliver said the city has taken two weeks to do something about this situation. And the city is also working with ten month consultants in Florida. Detroit has a current contract with four two six, and going through twenty thirty, which is eight months. The means for scriptbooks, officials, Oliver said, you have very long paths they want to reach for science. Austin, under the council discussion, second half of the day, they're the creatures downtown, and the trim is Robert H C the rat. Robert said the troops are planning relations with people, parents, and parts, special trim. Said events without an asterisk, darkness, trimmings, and ask for a list of areas to retrieve from, called the problem. Return to the talk show, Lieutenant Bill's Austin says every place in St. Arlington, city is trying, this truck situation is difficult to get out. Perry pointed out, he has six meters, he's trying to manage, and I would say it takes him through his useless. He said it hurts first, but your people said they won't move, the president said it was lack of. Sheriff said the city could sit up now, wire from utility bills, if he doesn't see things change from the future. And the federal rest process will be kind of pushed, resolved, and powered, electric vehicles. He said suddenly damage was due to main energy transformers, failing for some reason, and that's why it's operated on transformers, which is being watered, fixed, and cooled. Difficult example, said President Porter, the owner of the meter seven. He said, he did all this work for part time, after the utility bills, the workers have no control. She asked, who people should call, and someone should call the county sheriff's office. He said the sheriff's office committed to call that for a while. Three, three people, he can stop using all this work, if they have nothing for the utility bill, they can only take the payments. Oliver said two people went out of line, as the city was completely involved. Boston said communication, key, sentence to show system, aren't really so high. He said, like, in the council, the council mayor can employ. Oliver said even though they put their toll, which is fine, the city, like, not anything like. He said people have been invited to council, maybe to see what's going on with the people. Perry good, we turn, we wait the second. Oliver reminded the council, that, uh, Austin heard, and got in the end, Terry Ray, and the president, and the governor, and.
I hope you don't have any questions on discussion, in the minutes, or calls. Okay, you have to give a second, I mean, I hope you have a second. Who's second? Perry?
Perry?
I agree.
So, this. Cars?
Yes.
Nate?
I don't feel like we have enough time to, uh, it should have been in my package, but I know a lot that you read, and again, I didn't know what to say.
I'm sure I said I didn't control. No, I gave the lady, the manager, the mayor, I have the major, there's, there's a few minutes up here, that's next. Uh, Austin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Ish?
Yes.
Okay, Pierce?
Uh, she didn't have to be, they are Spanish.
We put the permitting panels.
We didn't have a question or a second. Everybody have questions?
No. And we have a horse, and we have a.
Now, the motion, we're done, second?
Yeah.
Motion.
Curry?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Nate? Austin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Ish?
Yes.
Danny, Danny, Danny. Williams, Amy.
Um, I give you all copy of our, um, monthly services report for the, uh, city and county. Um, there's also a few other pages attached here, um, with upcoming events for the community. I draw notes, the busy time of year for our community, lots of activities, just like the fair, and I think we went off well, with a lot of moving parts, and a lot of individuals, and purposes, and organizations, and everybody, and planning, so, uh, that's how things work really well, and, um, next of our, next biggest event, our fall festival, in just a couple of weeks. In the, in your package there, I've listed all of the flyers for different activities and things that we're trying to, um, have this year for the festival. Again, we have another company that's coming, and they have, um, some rides and bounce houses and different activities for the kids, so hopefully that can make the festival even bigger than what's last year. Uh, we've had, though, with all the activities and things that we're trying to bring back, um, we're trying to get people more involved in our community and participating in some of these activities. So, as you can see, we've got, uh, different kind of tournaments, and five Ks, and basketball shootout, and different things like that, but our registration is really down. So unless our community comes out and participates in these activities and registers to participate, um, we'll just have to cancel them. Um, so not for lack of time, but our community, I just encourage everyone to share this information and get involved and come out and make memories with your family and enjoy these activities that we have going on. Um, I'm trying to think of what else. Right now, in our office, we're working on our community directory, um, that was put out there, it's a few years, it'll come out in January of next year. Um, so I'll be getting all the updated information and adding that in there, as well, um, all the business information contacts and different things like that.
Five K, we have the only one, only one, not the, just president?
No, sir, we've got, um, the five K, we've got, um, a waterball tournament, we've got a foam goat tournament, we've got a basketball shootout, and a hatching, and registration on all of those, and, uh, my corner two people, so.
What do you guys have about your data?
Uh, right for the crescent flowers, now that one is a little bit different, that one, the kid would register there at the event, and we give out cash prizes for it, um, I have some food sponsorship, so I do have some, uh, really good cash prizes, usually the day of, you have a big turnout, so.
Jamie, you have this one, with, you know, in the future, oh, I've heard of just good things about the fair. Yep. This year is just awesome, outstanding, just wanted to give those to you, that are a bit of a force.
Well, that was a community-wide event, I know this room, there was a lot of different hands, and everybody loves the ball, so.
You think pass the word on this?
I'll pass it on, I keep telling everybody. Thank you, thank you, generally, yes, but honestly, it's been, uh, it's been, it's been all I have.
All right, next one's about, unfortunately, there you go.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mrs. Patricia, I tell you, there's one lady that does need a big shout out on the fair, and that's Karen Carlton.
Okay.
She worked, yeah, she worked really, really hard and was diligent on trying to get those people here, and it's kind of a fluke deal that they came, and, uh, they did really, did really well, they won't say that they'll come back next year, they'll say someone in Texas is trying to get on that same date, but they were very, they were very pleased, and they did, did really well, but she, she worked in the city, like Jamie said, the city and the county, they stepped up to do some things to get it, get the facilities out there ready, so, it really, it was an extremely nice fair, she sure won't get less. Couple of things, you see your sales tax information in front of you, and, um, also, I'm sure you've driven down the, the street overlay projects, and it's just, oh, it's so nice. I wish every street, prescient, was like that.
Are you bad not speaking?
I know, yeah. You, you just lie across.
Did you say?
You do. I'm letting the police hear you over there. But, uh, update on the sidewalk project, um, we should be getting the bid performance bond just any day, and then after that, the contractor will come for the mayor to sign. So I think we're very close to being ready to, to get that done. Uh, they are still tearing down houses, I think they're on the second one now, they're over on West Solid, so we've still got quite a few to do, but they're making good, good progress on that, so.
Please, you can add it from our part, too, on the part, I kind of love this one.
Well, what, that's actually Jake and him, our building and the new electric plant for the school, Prescott School District, because that's where their solar field's gonna go. So he's had to trangle up some trees and things there, so that's actually the activity culture that you're seeing there. That's it, unless you have questions for me.
Sidewalk, sidewalk's expected to be scored when?
Uh, we should get in the bid performance bond this week for the city to review, and then the mayor will sign off on the documents, and then the contractor will give us a date at that time. But they usually start by the way, because that's in their timeline on their paperwork, they say. So actually, it's a good timeline, they'll strive, and hopefully, they move as fast as the street overlay people will be walking down sidewalks. Yeah, that group, they hang in and took care of those streets, make quick work of that, so, and that's a very important point. Uh, it was submitted, and we normally will hear in October, they make the first cut, and you make that, then you have to go to Jacksonville and present before the department of parks and tourism, and working reference, and basically, bleach your face a lot of week in the ground, and then we can know probably it'll be sent. I feel pretty good about it. It's pretty strong. But as soon as I do something, I'll let you.
All right, thank you, Ben. When I get some, you do the, uh, family and the waters part, and it's easy, lightly, when all that, it's all about, it's not, uh, you should have two hand baths.
Forward, George, finish, okay. Uh, I think everyone copied this on the desk. Uh, this summer, we had trouble with, uh, source water at the river, basically continuously, and to the point that we actually lost all pumping capabilities for a couple of weeks. We went there, we found a beach sand in the river, because our intake line was stopped, but, so, we were in the process of solving this, solving the problem, we tried to solve it in-house with our, our people and our, uh, what do you call it, jet machine, high velocity silver cleaner, we actually cleaned the pipe out, put this place eighty feet long, cleaned it out from the river into, uh, the pumping station. I left a picture there, on, uh, Thursday, a couple of employees walking on pallets out into the river, running a jet machine in and out, putting the sand out. We were ready to clean it out, uh, we had a run that dug down into the water, and it found the end of the pipe, and it was basically half open, and so we went back to pumping, and everything was fine, for about a month. And then we quit pumping again, and then we got some more people to go down, and this time, the river sand had moved very aggressively, and it covered up the end of our pipe, about two feet deep. So then we had to hire a company to come in and dredge out the end of it, and there's a picture of, uh, a machine down on the riverbank, dredging out the sand. Uh, we got the street department to use their trucks, haul the sand forth, that saved us a little money there, and so we were cleaning it out. And then I went to the engineers and asked for solutions to this problem, instead of continuously getting out sand, digging out sand, paying for the same thing over and over again. They come up with a plan that we started putting into effect, and while we were at dollars in water, and we're preparing to, uh, install this fitting, uh, it became obvious that, that fitting was not going to solve our problem, it was just going to put it out a little bit longer, and we'd still run out of same problem, so, uh, we backed up, a bunch of engineers came up with a plan to relocate the end of our intake pipe, further out into the river, and away from the sand. So we did that, and you can see further over, picture, we installed two hundred forty feet of twenty inch pipe out into the river, loaded it out into the river, and sunk it, and moved our intake down the river and away from the sand. It's not a permanent solution, but it should, by its time, be able to, you know, figure project to have a permanent solution. This hopefully will last years instead of months. And, bottom line, the one coming before y'all, is the very last page with the highlight at the bottom. This was all made, done as an emergency project, because it had to be done right now, because since we were not taking any water out of the river, but we were using water every day, our stored water will become less and less every day, we didn't have time to run around and ask for money and, and talk to everybody, we had to do something to get the water going. So we did, and we spent a hundred sixty three thousand, five hundred seventy seven dollars and forty cents to accomplish this. And, so, you know, man, this is, this is money with no rent, nothing, nothing else, but serious money. And I visited the mayor, he gave us permission to proceed because we had to do it. And we discussed that there was rescue money that we had on hand still, and so the night we're asking, we all could approve the use of rescue money to take from this project. We have it on hand, uh, appreciation fund, to prove up down. So, we had to bring out a valid power type of rescue money that's, uh, on hand, and, uh, maybe use that for this.
And you said this won't fix the issue, but it'll probably patch it up, too?
This is a long-term temporary fix, I'm not on.
Yeah, I'm.
Well, you have to keep sand out of the water.
The, the sand bar that we're fighting, it's a key. Moved, uh, in the last five years, two hundred feet, covered us up, we went back on Google map and watched the progress of it, and it just came right over. And the pipe was sticking out, straight into the river, the flow come around, come, basically spread into the end of the pipe, so everything coming around the curve, it was pushing sand right into the end of pipe every time, as we were pumping. So we turned that end of it, carried it down the river two hundred feet, shot it forty feet out into the middle of the river, so that we're not, the, the flow is not coming into the end of the pipe. So we shouldn't be picking up the sand now. We involved the engineers, and they said that for a short term, long term temporary, this is about the answer to it. We used A L R X engineers, they were very familiar with it, and, uh, the amazing thing was, in this day and age, with sidewalks and everything, we were able to get the pipe and do this. There was, we got it within a week's time, and it was solved a week later.
Perry, we had this problem from last year?
Yes, ma'am, we had the same problem, yeah, for the last thirty years. We spent a hundred, we spent ninety thousand the first time, we spent, uh, thirty something thousand the next time, then we spent a ten, twenty thousand, ten percent of the spending money, doing the same thing, digging the sand out, hauling up the hill, come back in a few months, dig the sand out, hauling up the hill, uh, we're trying to get where we're at and do that every time.
But see, one thing, Peter, that we need to realize, too, and I understand what you're saying, that that river, the flow of the river is determining that project. If you get a lot of rain, and that river is up, and pushing that, or that sand is, uh, pushing towards those pipes, and that's, I guess we're going to have to deal with it on loan, I mean, then why don't see if you have a firm solution to it?
Well, that's why I said a long-term temporary.
Yeah, because. As long as the river's flowing, it's going to move, it's like.
One of the things we're planning on doing is, probably next month, is getting that, and go back and look at what we put in, and see how it's working, see how, see how it looks underwater. We can't see any of this, uh, this pipe we put in was rather expensive, but it was all there was in the United States, seven joint, six joint.